All right, I'd like to call the City Council meeting of July 17th, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Carr.
Here.
Alderman Catalano. Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski. Alderman Artwoods.
Here.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. I declare a quorum. Please stand and join in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Sismarski is here.
Seven thirty-one.
First, I need a motion to approve the minutes of June 19th, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next, let me go to the page here. All right, under Communications, I don't have nothing this evening. No. Does anybody wish to address the council with matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, no. Alderman Artie Woods is walking in. All right, we have two items under the mayor's report. You had the letters are attached. One is from Tiffany Zeremba, who's a resident, been a long time resident, family's still here. She's actually at Notre Dame for Nationals this week. She sent us this ask. She goes, if you guys would be willing to donate anything to sponsorship for the team, for the IBTF World Baton Twirling Championships, and I believe Turin, Italy.
I would...
Alderman Messina.
I don't know if we need a formal motion, but I would make a motion if it's possible to donate $500.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Alderman Artwoods.
If the motion or the second would entertain raising that to 1,000.
I'm in agreeance with that, sure. Was there an amount she was requesting?
No, it's so according to the thing here, you've got sponsorship...
Pretty long trips, I mean.
Right. It's so it's not a Wooddale team, but she's a Wooddale resident in the world championships. We've never, I told her, I go, we've never had this kind of request. I don't know how the council's going to react, but you want to send me the thing?
But pretty active through the year.
Yeah, I believe her mom's even on the library board, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep. I would, the motion would agree to raise to 1,000.
I'll agree.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Let's do a roll call then.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Carr.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next, we have the Wooddale Swim Team Parent Club and Addison Sharks Swim Team Parent Club. Now, they are combined, in case anybody did not know. We haven't had one of these in a while, but when they host conference championships, they do send us a request. They're asking for also a monetary donation, and I believe it's this coming weekend is the conference. Anything on that one?
This is to support the conference.
The conference championship. So they host, they host a conference championship.
Hosted here in Wooddale?
Here in Wooddale, yes.
I would make a motion to give them $1,000 also.
Okay. We have a second on that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions on this? All right, let's do a roll call.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Carr.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. That concludes my report. Mr. Mermis, anything on the city manager?
Yes, I have two items tonight. First item, in response to the damage caused by recent storms, the city will be performing an additional brush collection the week of July 28th. Piles must be placed out by the curb for collection, no later than 6:30 on Monday, July 28th. You can visit the city's website for more information. We're also going to be sending out a reverse 911 for a reminder for the residents in the near future. My second item, the city will honor the Wooddale VFW Tioga 2149 as it celebrates their 90th anniversary. This is a significant milestone, especially as many veteran organizations are struggling to stay active. Our celebration here in Wooddale will feature a car show and a concert that includes a band called Rocks Off, which is a Rolling Stone cover band, and there'll also be a local band that performs that night for the opening act. The evening will open with a flag ceremony to recognize the VFW, and we'd like to invite everyone in the community to join us on July 25th for the special evening. You can call City Hall or go to our website for more information. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Next, consent agenda. First item, approval of executive session minutes from June 5th, 2025. Do I motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Carr.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, we have the omnibus. We have five items. If no objections, I need a motion to approve five items.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Did anybody have an objection? I didn't see anybody raise their hand. Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Sismarski and Alderwoman Ames.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Carr.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, we need to approve the items. Item number one, a resolution approving authorization of the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and Wooddale Park District concerning a parking license at the Beach Water Park parking lot. Item number two, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Article 3, Section 5.305 of Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale to increase the number of Class P liquor licenses authorized for issuance. Item number three, a resolution approving a license agreement between the City of Wooddale and Commonwealth Edison Company for installation and maintenance of underground electrical facilities within city rights of way. Item number four, resolution approving a proposal from Concentric Integration for the fiscal year 2026, North Wastewater Treatment Plant SCADA upgrades in amount not to exceed 76,100. Item number five, approval of proposals for the purchase of public works vehicle in amount not to exceed 470,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Who's second? Alderman Carr, okay. Any, roll call.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Carr.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, committee chair reports, planning and zoning. Alderman Sismarski.
I have one, mayor.
Go ahead.
Resolution adopting and approving a master site plan for Wooddale Community Park.
That's your, do I have a second? And we have a presentation, I believe.
Ms. Springer?
Ms. Springer, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, no problem. So this evening, we're presenting for your consideration the final master plan for community park, and this evening Maria Blood is here from Upland Design. We've been working with them for about three quarters of a year now. She has a very short presentation, about five minutes, that will show the changes that occurred between the last meeting and this evening. And I'll be, both of us will be available for questions afterwards.
Okay. Ms. Blood.
Hello again, thank you for having us. I'd just like to go back to, again Stacy had mentioned, our last, sorry, are just the timeline of all the meetings to date, the last meeting being our PBZ meeting. We're going to go over just kind of phasing timeline, the cost reduction at the last two PBZ meetings, the final master plan, the cost where it stands right now, and next steps to get us to development. Overall, the site master plan, the goals were to do a little bit more research and site analysis, that's where it got us today, confirm, confirm the park elements themselves, finalize the concept and proposed plan, which we have been reiterating and designing to this date, and general locations for the site elements. Really, this next phase after the master plan is adopted is to further design development. So taking those site elements, pushing them, understanding the materials more, the colors more, really getting into the detail. So that is the next phase that we are proposing for 25, for late '26. And then you could see at the bottom, Phase 1 continues with permitting, bidding, construction, and then the cycle repeats for each subsequent phase. This is a master plan that was shown in March to PBZ. After we presented this master plan, we went through cost reduction selections to help with our budget. After that, we came back to PZB on June 12th with this master plan right here. From that meeting, the overall direction was to change the amphitheater to a less expensive open-air option and include a natural ice rink. So that is where we are today, making those updates. This prefabricated amphitheater or open-air shelter, what we heard throughout the process as well is including some storage spaces. So during design development, this is just a, an idea image that, you know, lots of people were liking. So during design development, that's where we're going to incorporate those storage spaces that we know is a need for the city. So they will be further refined. And then you could see on the bottom right box, that is where we included that natural ice rink as well, which we heard from PBZ last time as well. So those are the updates to the proposed final master plan. Included is the updated phasing plan and cost summary. Over the span of six to seven years, our bottom estimate is at 7.9. Again, our first step after this is in 2026, go through design development and construction documents, where we had hired more of an architect and engineer for that Phase 0, start developing the, the construction documentation for finalizing the details and site elements and locations, and preparing, start preparing detailed construction documents for that next phase in '27 and '28, where we go for permitting, bidding, and start construction. Construction, we would go out to bid and certainly follow the purchasing procedures of the city. Part of that, we're also looking at doing a grant application as part of Phase 2, so some of that will need to start being thought about and will be submitted in fall of '28, knowing that that funding wouldn't come till '29. So as we continue moving forward with this Phase 0 and Phase 1 portion of the project, we're still thinking this as a master plan as a whole, and how we're going to fund part of that through different funding sources in '28. So we're constantly, you know, moving through the different phases. All right.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Alderman Artie Woods.
Tonight, we're just voting on approving the master plan, not on the financing, the rest of it.
Right.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Currielli.
You have the, in the three-phase plan here, you have the trail loop broken up into three parts, which would be in the first phase, second phase, and third phase. Can you sort of?
Go ahead, Ms. Blood.
So they're all based off the color coding, so the trail in the pink boxes would be part of that first phase, and then where the trail is more in the, the orange or around here, that's where we'd have some more of the trail pieces.
What would be the?
Go ahead, follow up.
What would be the last phase then?
Go ahead, Ms. Blood.
Or future phases, I guess.
The future phases would be everything that's not in the highlighted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Carr.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Artwoods.
Thank you, mayor. I have two reports. One, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale regarding bicycles, personal mobility devices, and updating outdated code provisions.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Alderman Sismarski, Alderwoman Ames. Questions on this?
You have one right there.
Hold on. Okay. Alderman Artie Woods.
Do we have a copy of what the graphic that's going to go on in social media is going to look like yet?
Chief, do you have that graphic? I know.
Staff has one prepared that passes tonight that'll be sent out, I believe, in the manager's report tomorrow, as well as we'll start advertising around town.
Okay. Do, are we, do we want to see it before it went out? Is that, is that what you're asking for, Alderman Woods?
It's, that's okay.
So maybe get some feedback after you put it in the report tomorrow? Alderman Artwoods.
Yeah, well, since we don't have it, maybe if the chief could touch upon, I know we're changing a lot of language and updating and all that, you just speak to what the main focus is, or what, what we're trying to accomplish with what we're doing.
Overall, or reference the flyer?
Overall. Well, I think one's related to the other, I guess.
So overall, we're looking to...
Go ahead, chief.
Educate the public on the changes we're making, the changes in what the state laws have been on e-scooters and e-bikes, and we're looking to not start enforcement right away, but educate the parents, educate the kids on what is legal, what is not legal, based upon the changes to our local ordinance. If we have repeat offenders, or the parents are not helping us solve the problem, we then have enforcement action that we can take against the parents.
Did you have a follow-up, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, follow-up. So if this phase doesn't have the desired effect, is there a Phase 2?
There's...
Chief.
There is increasing fines, which I believe is the next item on the master fee schedule that would start at $50, and it would increase $50 from there. We also have an impoundment provision if we keep seeing the same repeated behavior from the same person.
Okay. And just a closing comment, and I think I mentioned this the prior meeting with the deputy chief, that when we put that informative piece together, that that fining language is in there, so that parents understand, as opposed to being a surprise, that my Johnny was, you know, stopped and now I owe $100, nobody ever said that, or $50 or whatever.
Actually, I spoke to chief earlier today, was one of my concerns, and I go, if you pull over somebody who's younger, right, doesn't have a license, somebody who's 14, 13, are we calling the parents right away? Because I know they're not going to tell the parents, and he said, yes, the parents will be made aware, and also be made aware that if their son or daughter gets pulled over again, that's when the fines may start, or it might be a second, might not fine till the third one. I don't know, leave that to the discretion of the chief. Go ahead, chief.
Yeah, the, the goal is education and compliance, not to stop every kid on a bike or scooter and start giving them $50 tickets.
You have a, Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Let, no, go ahead.
Alderman Messina.
I didn't make last week's meeting, but, I mean, I think, well, I can't speak for everybody else, but I know I get a ton of calls about this issue, and I guess I was a little disappointed to hear that we didn't enact some type of registration. I know it could be cumbersome, but I feel like it then puts a little bit more accountability on the parents, to Alderman Artwoods' point, like, surprise me, and no offense, I say it and I'll say it again, best police department probably in the country, but there's a lot of discretion that that leaves you guys, and, and that's okay. I'm usually very good with that, but when it comes to bikes, there might be somebody just like fishing in the ponds, like they're not supposed to. Some officers are like, ah, whatever, good luck. Some are, go, go off on your way, right? And I just don't see there being the enforcement that we need by there not being the, the extra step. Like, I'm okay with the discretion, but I would have preferred that we enact a registration.
Good, chief.
I'll let the city attorney chime in, but I believe our hands are tied by the state on a portion of that.
Mr. Bond.
Yeah, there's certainly, because registration and licensing are, are sometimes intermixed, and, you know, we don't have the, the authority to license those. We would be able to do a registration of sort. There's no way of compelling that registration, and then how would the officer see it on a vehicle if they were, you know, if the vehicle's doing something, they're going to use that discretion to determine whether or not it's a violation. The parents get notified, so if you get your education out, the parents can be notified right away with any infraction. They have parental responsibility if the, the activity continues, or they're, it's such, you know, the conduct is so egregious when they're, when they're doing it. But the, the registration would be, you know, could be construed as we're somehow trying to license bicycles, and that would be beyond the scope of our statutory.
Alderman Messina.
So how, maybe I missed this in the reading, how exactly is the parent going to be notified? Like, are you going to pull me on the side and call, and call the parents in front of them, like it was 1945? Like, I, I don't, I'm kind of confused by that.
That's what it sounded like to me when I spoke to the chief.
It's going to depend on the infraction, you know? It depends what exactly they're doing, how dangerous it is, the age of the child, if we've dealt with them before or not.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I just, I just don't, again, I'll say it again, preface my statement, the best police department, I know, I just don't see you guys doing that and wanting to do that. No one's going to call the parents, and we're just going to have the same problem over and over, where I feel like, you said it is possible to do some registration, where there's some compelling way to grab that information, where we have it, the officer can scan that information, have it, and say, maybe it's a letter, like a code enforcement letter that says, your son or daughter was doing X, and that goes out. I don't know why we would put it on the officers. It's kind of like a curfew. Why a curfew thing? The officer's probably not going to, one in a million is the officer going to bring you home and say, your son and daughter are out after hours. It's just going to go nowhere.
Mr. Bond, go ahead.
Yeah, if there was a registration offense, that would be a minimal fine, and it would be, that would be adjudicated right then, there on the spot if that were the case. It wouldn't have the desired effect, which is, the purpose of this is to try and get, control that, that conduct. All that would do is, say, they have to get it registered, they get a fine, they have to come in and register. We don't know which bike is being, you know, used improperly according to the rules, so the, the best course of action is for these officers, when they see something, to do something about it. Some of it might be, like they do with juveniles, they have a, you know, they can deal with them on the spot, they can do a station adjustment, which means they take them down and, and give them a stern warning in front of the parents. But the, the whole purpose, and this has a, a scheme in it that is going to notify, get the parents notification, and then get the parents financially obligated for those offenses.
But it's discretionary.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
It's discretionary only, and it's if the officer is having a good day and feels like they want to do it. So is that fair to say? There, it's their discretion, I'm not going to, I'll add, take off the commentary.
I mean, if it's the council direction, we can give a strict policy where we will notify every parent of every kid we stop on an e-bike or e-scooter who did something wrong. Again, the primary thing is to educate the public, the parents and the kids on what they can and can't do, and this is not going to solve the problem. Enacting these ordinances isn't going to solve the problem, but it's going to protect the drivers, it's going to protect the pedestrians, when something does happen, something bad's going to happen at some point.
It is happening everywhere. I mean, yeah.
Hold on.
This isn't, we're not going to be able to prevent that. These kids are out everywhere, in every city, in every state, zipping in and out of traffic. All we can do is try to protect the drivers, the pedestrians, and hope that the parents take some responsibility, and they just don't go out to the store and keep buying these things and handing them off to the kids.
Alderwoman Ames.
Chief, what is the timeframe for the education period? Are we waiting till the kids are in school, and have the police officers maybe have, like, assembly kind of meeting, going over rules with the kids? Like, what's the plan?
Go ahead, chief.
Yeah, that's an option. I mean, if this, if this passes, we're going to roll it out right away, on the website, on social media. I know there was mention of including it in the water billing, when that goes out, future newsletters, and then we'll ask this, we'll, we'll reach out to the schools, and we can do presentations, and we'll also ask them to include it in their newsletters that go out to the parents.
Follow up? Go ahead, Alderwoman Ames.
The reason I was asking for a timeframe is because you said it wasn't really going to be, start to be enforced until after the education period, so like, what were your targets for that, and then when?
I'm thinking, we would do probably about at least a full month of education to get this out there. We don't want to just start stopping kids tomorrow if this passes and handing out tickets. Now, we can stop them, educate them, give them warnings, and notify the parents, but again, we're looking to educate them, we're not looking to go out and start chasing down every kid on an e-bike. I don't have the manpower, and our calls for service don't allow for it.
Thank you.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Brings me right back to my point, like, maybe it's not registration, there's got to be some way, code enforcement, okay, we're dealing with kids, we're dealing with grownups and don't even know to cut their grass, and we have to send them a letter. Like, if we can't even get, we have to educate grown adults because they don't know to cut their grass and they need a letter, I just, I don't know how, if there's some way we can feasibly take the onus off of you guys, so it's not a continual call for service, and it's a, just like a code enforcement letter, it goes out and says, hey, your child was doing X, Y, and Z. Yeah, you do something on the spot, that's great. I just think this is, the way it's presented, it was kind of a check-in-the-box, and it's kind of disappointing, especially after literally a child just died two weeks ago, and then something happened in Almhurst a week ago. I mean, these are things that I get continual texts on daily, and my buddy here, too, is starting to feel the effects of those texts, too. So, I don't know, anything we can do to just put a little bit more accountability would be appreciated.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, I could go on along that same line, but that would just chew up some time. I, I think we got to start somewhere, and this is a good start, I guess, if I really look at it and see how it goes, and if it's not working, 90 days, six months, we're going to have to come back and do something else, because the, the issue's not going away, and the problem's only going to get bigger.
And in 90 days, we'll start getting into October, November, and they're going to stop for the winter, but they'll, the e-bikes may still go, because I've seen a couple guys, looks like they're going to work, they have the light green vests, and they're on the sidewalks, and the e-bikes should not be on the sidewalks. I know I've seen same guy at least three times on Wooddale Road, Irving Parker, I should say. Mr. Bond, go ahead, he's anxious.
No, I just, and just like with anything, we have the authority, they changed, the state's changed the definition of what constituted a bicycle. This is an opportunity to be able to regulate it, and one of the things that they found is the deaths related to these have gone down with those in those communities that have regulations, because the kids know that, you know, what they can and can't do, or the parents do. Not everybody's going to follow the rules. But by having the system we have, where you've got a graduated fines system, so if they have a first offense or seriously keeps going up and up, there's parental responsibility, so the parents are going to be on the hook for it. You can... We can seize the... And impound the vehicle, so they're going to have bikes, the parents have to come back, come in, they're going to have to pay the fee. So you've got liability for both the child, the parent, and you've got the bikes being taken away on a temporary basis. They have a right to a hearing for due process, but... And again, if it, you know, and look at this, what's going on in the next several months, and there may be things that need to be tweaked, because everybody's going to try and find a way around whatever that they're prohibited from doing. That's just human nature.
Alderman Woods?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
No, we have a motion. We have... Alderman Sismarski and Alderwoman Ames.
Oh, all right.
We have a motion, a second already. All right. Roll call.
I thought her.
No, Alderman... Yeah, it's...
Sorry. Sorry.
You scratched me up now? Come on.
Ames? Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski? I mean, Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes.
Next, I have an ordinance amending the master fee schedule of the city of Wooddale.
Is that your motion? Do I have a motion?
It's not my motion.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? No questions? Roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes.
That's the end of my report, mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Artie Woods?
I have three reports, mayor.
Go ahead.
First, approval of final payment to SKC Construction Incorporated for the fiscal year 2026 Crack Ceiling Program in an amount not to exceed $30,488.18. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on this one? Roll call.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes.
Second, approval of final payment to H&amp;H Electric Company for the Foster Avenue Streetlight Installation Program in an amount not to exceed $44,286.46. That is my motion.
Second.
Have a motion. Second. Questions on this one? Roll call.